City Council Study Session, April fourteenth, twenty twen- twenty twenty-five in session. First item up is council-sponsored item. Item number one is the resolution authorizing reward money for the information leading to the resolution of specific unsolved cases and funding DNA testing for cases as determined by the city manager, per request by Councilman Bryce Stewart. Councilman Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This was just an idea that I came up with to try to give the police department some more tools to possibly solve some unsolved homicides in Independence. I first reached out to the chairman, Mr. Cover, the city councillor, and found out if it was, we could do something like this, and he seemed to concur that we could, and then reached out to the city manager. And after some back and forth, we kind of came up with a plan, which will be presented tonight.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Stewart. As the councilmember said, after this idea was brought forward, I asked our police department to put together information to further bring this idea to life so the council could give this consideration. So with that, I will ask the chief to come forward and kick us off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. Adam Dussman, Chief of Police for the Independence Missouri Police Department. Like Councilmember Stewart said, he had this great idea to kind of bring some fresh attention and some positive rewards to hopefully generate some leads on some of these unsolved cases. So after some initial deliberation, I went to our Investigations Division, and you're going to hear from Major Mike Onka here in just a second, as he lays out kind of the nuts and bolts of this program. From a high level, as Councilmember Stewart initially proposed, that we've allocated a hundred thousand dollars to, that we could identify from the marijuana sales tax fund to be able to use for this initiative. And so that will be broken down. It's a, no set term for specific funding DNA cases, depending on how extensive it is, have anywhere from three to six thousand dollars, or it could go higher than that, depending on what the testing that would be needed of these evidence. But up to about ten thousand dollars will be established for each case that, that would be added to this program that Major Onka is going to take over here in just a second, within the Crime Stoppers framework, that would allow each of these cases that we've identified to be rewarded if that generated lead is successful in solving that case and either a prosecution is done, or in the event that an offender is deceased, or no longer a viable option for prosecution, at least it successfully reduces the case, again, with the ultimate goal of being able to provide some justice and closure for these victims, their families, and our community overall in some of these cases. So with that, I'll ask Major Onka to come up, and then we'll stand for questions at the end.
Major Mike Onka, City of Independence Police Department, or Independence Police Department. I'm the Investigations Unit Commander. What we did with this is pretty much we didn't reinvent the wheel. We kept what was already kind of in place from our end, and then utilizing the TIPS hotline. There was some initial conversation about maybe taking our own tips and kind of starting our own, you know, TIPS hotline logistically, maybe could be done. Right now, we don't have the resources for it, or manpower. The good thing is with the TIPS hotline, that was created in nineteen eighty-two. It's already established. There's no, excuse me, I'm fighting a sore throat, too. So there's, there's no reinventing the wheel. The information's already out there. Everybody knows how to get a hold of TIPS hotline. Like I said, they've been doing it since nineteen eighty-two. They haven't perfected. They're, you know, as far as from, everything from keeping, you know, all your informants anonymous, to, you know, not having to go to court and all that, the mechanism is already in place and it's ready to go. So that's pretty much the first part, is we're going to utilize the TIPS hotline. The second part of that is how we're going to do that as a unit. Once again, we're not reinventing the wheel on this at all. The cases that we chose initially are, with the exception of the Diane Alt case, which is what kind of brought all this to us, is cases that we currently have investigative staff that's familiar with the case, or still have a case detective that is overseeing that case. So that's pretty much how we're going to do it. If there was an initial case detective assigned to that case, they'll maintain it. We've got several of these that the, obviously the Diane Alt case, but even several of the more recent cases, the detective's no longer here, so we've reassigned that one. And I think there's two, actually, that we reassigned. The reason we kind of did that is because, first of all, if you were initially assigned the case, you have all the intimate knowledge of it. You know exactly the ins and outs of it. You know, with these cold cases, especially with the detectives no longer being here, we have to start that all over again. So we have to hand this big case file to a detective, and they have to learn the case. They have to know exactly what happened in the case. So just as an initial run, so we could get up and running and get a start on it, we chose cases that, like I said, either we, we still have a investigation personnel that is assigned to that case, or it was something that, you know, we can dedicate one detective, learn this case, and go from there. That's pretty much, I think, the bulk of that. The cold, as far as the lab work, that's going to kind of work the same way. If, we've got one that we identified that possibly there's some advanced DNA that's being done by a lab down in Texas, that maybe there's some, some DNA evidence we can send down. That starts at about ten thousand, so that's kind of why we picked that one, is because if we've got that as an option, we can try it. Once again, we'll handle them just like we do any other homicide. If, you know, if a lead comes in, we get a tip, the lead as well as the Investigation Sergeant will go over it, look at it, and work it just like a current homicide. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts. The cases we picked, like I said, was Diane Alt. It's a ninety-four case, and that's, you know, pretty much the synopsis of it. This is the one I was talking about that may have some DNA that's possible. There, there may be some DNA from a, underneath the fingernail, there may be some DNA from a rug. And then, these are just some current ones that our current investigative staff still holds on their caseload. Like I said, I kept it short, so if you guys have any questions, shoot away.
Well, thank you, Councilman Stewart. Do you have any questions or any follow-up?
I don't have any questions. I just, the other thing I wanted to ask, I'd like to get this started as soon as possible, and per our rules, I believe it has to wait ten days to go on a study, an agenda. However, I would like to ask for a consensus of the city council to actually put this on our April the twenty-first meeting.
Okay. Before we discuss the consensus, anyone who'd like to ask any questions of Major Onka? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just, for people listening at home, making sure that they understand, this doesn't affect how we manage our new crimes or any of that. This is really a way to give some special attention to cold cases, to be able to find resolution to those.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah. I have a few questions. Are we currently budgeting for DNA testing?
We have DNA, we have a budget, just an overall budget. Obviously, we do it pretty quick because of the cost of the DNA in the lab. We've got some, you know, like, high patrol lab and stuff that's minimal or no cost. However, you've got at least usually a year turnaround on getting stuff back. Kansas City, there's a cost associated with it. A lot of times, we can get stuff a little quicker. If we get something that's, that's really, we, we need this right now, there are, there's, Johnson County, Kansas, has got a lab we've used a little bit, but with each of those choices, the increase in the, in the DNA, or the overall lab costs.
What about, like, from the prosecutor's office or anything of that nature? Do they do any of that kind of work, or no? That's all on us?
That's all on us.
Okay. And, you know, I guess I'm, I'm wondering with the, you talked about the TIPS program, I mean, would, I'm trying to figure out why, why we wouldn't just use the, I mean, there's already funds set aside in the TIPS program. I'm just trying to figure out why, is that not enough money, or they don't, they, they pick and choose who the, what they're going to put, you know, offers out for, or how does that, I'm not understanding.
What we'll do is, we will get, we'll, we'll get these stories featured. I think the, it was a thousand dollars a tip. I'm assuming it's still the same. What we talked about, well, what was presented to me is we'll do ten thousand a tip. If we give that money, we can earmark that money, two tips specifically for each of our highlighted cases. You know, maybe with that, that extra money, it may generate a few. A, a lot of these have, you know, that push has already been made, as in with all of our cold cases, notify the TIPS hotline. You know, in essence, we're just kind of hoping that maybe the added funds will, maybe somebody that was on the fence decides now it's worth their while. Because it's like with most crimes, at the end of the day, somebody out there knows what happened. Somebody out there knows something. It's just getting them pushed to, you know, the, the TIPS hotline has a, you know, it protects them on the staying anonymous side, because it utilizes the media, them, and the police department. You know, the one good thing about TIPS is if you look up their, or the, the TIPS hotline, if you look up their website, it's highlighted in red, "We are not the police," because a lot of people don't want to talk to the police. So they, they specifically sell that, that we're not the police. So, you know, that kind of helps cross that, that bridge as well. And then the, the added money, you know, may be the last step to push them into.
So this would be ten thousand versus one thousand, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Gotcha. And this may be a question for the city manager, but the, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, substantial amount of money, that would come from the marijuana sales tax, do we have, we have enough funds in there for that? I mean, without, because we've earmarked a number of them, you know, a substantial amount of that money for purposes, so.
Yeah, good question. We have a sufficient balance to pilot this program right now. So, you know, they were able to break all ten cases, you know, those criteria were met. We could do that. I've not forecasted that out longer term, if this would be viable to sustain over a longer period, you know, if those ten cases were solved as a result of this. But the initial ten, we do have sufficient revenue to put up to support that.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I don't, I'm just thinking now, I, I don't mind, you know, like, a one-time shot in the arm, see if we can, if we get something to happen, but I wouldn't want us to be budgeting every year to bring it up, back up to a hundred thousand, unless we really need that, you know? So, okay, all right, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman?
So the reward comes once there's a conviction, is that right?
It is, yes. So they, they can call and make the tip, but unless it, it leads to an arrest and a conviction, there's no reward.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Wylie?
This is just curiosity, but what happens to the funds allocated if there's no leads generated in a case?
No. They don't get dispersed. They only get dispersed, and, and like I said, you could, you notify TIPS that you're earmarking this for Diane Alt's case, and then you'll highlight that case. If there's no TIPS, there's, there's no expense.
So, another question. So, um, so in that regard, you know, if we put a hundred thousand away, and, I mean, if none of it got used, then we got a hundred thousand dollars sitting there not being used for anything for, what, forever? Or, I mean, what's the, what's the plan that way?
Yeah, so we initially discussed with Councilmember Stewart and city manager, kind of this pilot program approach. We're going to run these for, we figure probably about six months to see what that highlight looks like. If we have generated no tips or no leads within, or viable options within six months, we'll probably highlight five different ones and just keep going through that list. If we get to the end of our thirty-three unsolved cases, some of those, just very frankly, because they're old, sixties and beyond, are not viable cases to really, not that we won't try, but the likelihood of people aging out and, and either, or not being alive anymore from, you know, that we're in their adulthood when those crimes were committed, is a viable option. So, once we go through that list and we've tried everything we can, then the, the program ceases to exist at that point, unless we have some reason to resurrect it.
Will that take action on our part to, if we get to that point, I don't know if we will, but hopefully not, hopefully we use it, but if we got to that point, and would that take action on our part to undo it? Or what, I'm looking at Jeremy, looking at you.
I mean, yeah, at, at that point, I mean, there isn't any set end date to, to the program, so it's, it's essentially going to be there until either runs out of money, or until you all decide to, to pull the money back. So yes, that would take council action at that point.
Okay. Well, I guess I, I'm, I got no problem with this, I, but I would like maybe a report back at some point in time, just so that we know if it's being productive or not, you know?
Happy to, yeah. We figured we would come back at either a study session or, or another venue of the council's choice, to give a report after this initial six months, just to, it's good for us to be able to tell you, hey, you know, here's what it, here's what it generated, or here's what it didn't, and here's where we're going to go next.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Is there any reason we couldn't just put a sunset on this, that at the end of five years, should the dollars not be expended, that they would revert back to the budget unless action by the council? That way, we address Councilmember Fears' concern about the money just kind of getting tucked in, an account and forgotten about?
My understanding, at least unless Mr. Cover has, or, or Mr. Walker has any other, is that this will come from the fund balance that's there, so it doesn't actually get expended until, so it will be in that fund balance. It's not like it's going to be withdrawn from that, and it'll just be earmarked as we go forward. Is that accurate, Zach?
Unless and until it's re-appropriated, no. It would, it would not roll forward.
Any other questions for the chief or the major? Hearing none, then let's consider the consideration of suspending the rules of order, places on the next available agenda. Is that what I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Councilwoman?
Yes, if, I just, I'm asking for a consensus to do that.
Okay. Looks like there's another.
What would be our procedure for that? Because we usually don't vote in, in study sessions, so I'm not sure.
So adding things to agendas, actually, the one thing that you can vote on in the study session. But, but regardless, I think as long, you know, because the agenda for that meeting has already been published, that's why as a staff, we wouldn't be changing at this point. So I, I think, I see a consensus that you all are, are okay with that, so I don't actually, I don't, I don't really need a vote on that. I think Suzanne, as long as she's comfortable with that, then we'll get it added to the May twenty-four, or, sorry, April twenty-first agenda.
You're okay with that, Councilwoman?
Okay. Great.
And do you have that, City Clerk? Perfect. Moving on to council-sponsored items number two, a resolution directing the city manager to commit the City of Independence to participating in Legacy Project TC Three as part of the twenty-twenty-six Parade of Hearts. Councilwoman Heather Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to have our, we have special guests tonight, and I'm going to have them speak about something that could be potentially really exciting for Independence, that sort of coincides with FIFA. So I'm going to hand it over. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. It's good to be here this evening. Thank you, Mayor Protem, councilpeople, administration. Thank you so much for this evening. I am Stacy Short. I am the volunteer chair of the newly reappointed Mayor's Commission on the Arts. I am speaking tonight, not really for the art commission, but because I've been participating with the Parade of Hearts since its inception, and feel strongly that, once again, the arts are not a byproduct of activity, but arts are an economy, and the Parade of Hearts is exactly that. It brings not only an immense amount of popularity to the whole region, but every community that's participating, we, they get a return on that participation that is just something you can't really purchase. It's unique, and it's passion, and it's fun, and I think the fact that people follow these hearts all around the region, it only highlights the fact that everybody's participation makes the whole project a success. And the past, we didn't ever intend the very first time that this would go on, but it was such an immense success that we could not, we couldn't take a chance not to do it again, and now, again, we'll repeat that, and look forward to a whole new approach, not a whole new approach, a new approach, but different approach, to presenting these hearts. And the organization that has put this all together is a phenomenal group of so many people and so many participants, but that's what it takes to do such a huge project. So I'm really pleased that this evening, you get to hear from Jen Nusbeck, who I've had the privilege of working with since twenty twenty-two? Twenty-one, twenty-one. Time flies. I'll just remind you all, though, there is, at the end of the parade, that we sell the hearts, or there's an auction, and there's one of the hearts, a permanent ownership up in the law office there, up on Pleasant, in their front lawn, so in case you need a reminder what they look like. So let me introduce you again to Jen Nusbeck.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council, administration. Thank you for inviting me in this evening. I'm going to be as brief as possible and then open it up for some questions. As Stacy so kindly introduced me, I am Jennifer Nusbeck. I am CEO of Clutch KC, and also Executive Director for Parade of Hearts. As a founding board member, we started Parade of Hearts in June of twenty twenty. The plan was to only do it one year. And here we are on a year of hiatus, and just as a future footnote, we do not plan to do it every year. We probably will skip a year or two. And so to date, we have covered eight counties, three hundred and five hearts, and a lot of laughs and smiles and connections. So in the past, you're probably aware, we have had designated beneficiaries, specifically Visit KC, the hospitality industry, Mid-America Regional Council, just to name a few. Last year, our Board of Directors voted that the twenty-twenty-six beneficiary will be the entire greater Kansas City region, which is seven counties. And that being why I'm here this evening. As Mayor Protem mentioned, this has been newly renamed, Legacy TC Three. It is a tourism opportunity, and I just want to touch on a couple of things of how this all started. So once we named the beneficiaries the greater Kansas City region on both sides of the state line, we wanted to have impact, particularly economic impact, direct and indirect. So we looked at making a significant investment in the mobile app that we've used in the past, but far greater enhancements, some more supporting area businesses and tourism. As we started discussing with regional mayors, what we found was, there were conversations with KC twenty twenty-six, which is the Committee for World Cup, Visit KC, Arts KC, Mid-America Regional Council, everyone's kind of doing their own segment. What we are doing, and after many, many discussions since last summer, is putting together a platform, not just public-facing, but behind-the-scenes, so that counties and cities from around the region can collaborate, communicate, and coordinate. And that is something that has never been available to the region in municipality hands leading that. So we built this on a small-city budget for big-city opportunities, toolkits, which, reverently, I will say, that is not usually the case when we talk about regional planning. Usually, it comes from our neighbor around the corner, KC Mo, built big-city cost, and hope you can opt in. Ours is at the minimum, because the other three hundred thousand dollars is our net-proceeds investment into this, and that is why we selected the region as a beneficiary. So very quickly, I just want to top, talk on the three points for opting in. Your investment is not just to be able to have the keys to behind-the-scenes coordinating and collaborating, but it's also a way to connect your local businesses where they can opt in for free and promote. For example, Ophelia's Friday specials, half-price appetizers will start June first and August thirtieth. They can keep that up inside this platform, so when the public visits Independence, whether it's a heart, or they are going to a trail, they can look up restaurants, and maybe that is what pops up, whoever opts in as businesses. That is your extension to support your local businesses. Secondly, this is about having a seat on our task force, because we named it Legacy for a reason. We're going to hand this platform over to the region September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So the infrastructure and all that is being built will be handed at no cost to the region. Leadership will have to be determined, governance, et cetera. But this task force, starting next month, will be building the future planning for what this Legacy app will look like, not only coordinating behind-the-scenes, but what is pushed out to the public. And finally, the opting cost is a one-time fee of ten thousand per municipality or county. Your neighbors of just Lee Summit, Raymore, Jackson County, just to name a couple on this side of Eastern Jackson County have committed. We've got about a dozen commitments thus far. We have until June thirtieth before we close that opt-in opportunity, one-time fee of ten thousand. And we are more than happy to defer payment through this year to the end of Q four, if we need to. And that is all. I will take questions if you have any.
Any questions, comments, or kick it back off to Councilwoman Wiley for further conversation or open? Councilwoman McCandless?
I know we've had a number of hearts that have come to Independence. We had them at Truman Library, we've had them in other places in town. Does this mean that we will likely get a heart to come to town?
Great question. And the answer is, these are two separate. I can tell you now, Independence, without having to do a sponsorship as you've done in the past, you're getting a heart or two, or three.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with this opt-in. It has everything to do with connecting residents and visitors during the Parade of Hearts. So if I'm visiting Raytown, I want a breadcrumb to be able to get to Blue Springs, and that way, we will drop several along the way. And we have a committee that helps determine locations.
So this is more the marketing arm of Parade of Hearts, so that the economic benefits come to the towns, but the hearts themselves are an independent item? Is that fair?
The heart placement is an independent item. Think of the Parade of Hearts as one tourism piece of this collective TC Three mobile platform, which will be web-based.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fears?
Um, so, so really what we're getting here is, is an upgraded app. I mean, that's really what you're going to use the funds for, is a, a much better product to get out to the, the public? Is that what I'm understanding, or is it?
Well, Parade of Hearts will own its intellectual property as we heart-hunt and keep track. That will move with us next September of twenty-six. The infrastructure that's being built, behind-the-scenes and public-facing, is The infrastructure that's being built behind-the-scenes and public-facing is a web-based app that gives you a communication tool that stays within that platform, and you control the messaging that's pushed out to the public. So I would say it's not just an upgrade. It is a full, brand-new build.
Whole new ballgame.
Absolutely.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Mr. City Manager, where would the $10,000 come from on this?
Really, I think the only realistic options with appropriateness would be the general revenue or the Tourism Fund. Part of the reason we wanted to get this on the agenda now, though, is because we're in our budget development processes and want to get the council's guidance on this.
Okay, so it would be appropriate to be a tourism expenditure? I mean, it seems like it would.
It would seem to meet the spirit of the purpose of the Tourism Fund, which is the marketing and promotion of the city.
Do we have adequate funds in there to do that?
We would budget for that. Yeah, a lot of other stuff in that. We would, we would make that part of the fund's budget for the next fiscal year, so ensuring that it remains balanced but incorporates the funding for that with it.
You know, I guess I'm, I'm not opposed to doing it if we can do it out of the Tourism Fund, if we're doing it out of the General Fund. I think it's hard-pressed, I'm hard-pressed to justify that relative to other, you know, costs that we, I mean, we have so many needs out of the General Fund, so that's just my rea, I mean, without thinking about it anymore, that's just reaction.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to just follow up on Councilmember Fears' thoughts. I'm okay putting it in the Tourism Fund as long as you look at our budgeting needs in advance to see that we're not shutting something off in order to do this. So if you will take that into your consideration, thank you.
Well, I have one. Can you go back to when you were describing the restaurant? How does, how does getting that information out there and work to where people can see where they're at?
So that's been part of our mobile app in the past. McCormick Distillery, Holiday Distillery is a great example. They used a link, it took them 30 seconds to list their name, the offer, the time it starts, the date, and the expiration. So that brought people to the distillery, and they loved it. It brought people into their gift shop. For us, and when we say behind-the-scenes, we're handing you the keys. Think of us as the conduit manager. So we would look to your task force appointee to disseminate who that might be to reach your businesses. Example, your chamber president is a great start. It's a value add for membership and social media. We certainly will be pushing it out as well. But we look to you guys and how you reach your own businesses for other opportunities as well. You are your best advocate for your local businesses.
So this could be for citywide typically?
Unequivocally.
Targeted and for citywide?
As it should be.
Sure, okay.
And that's tourism. As Councilman Fears, I will say, I fully support, when we talk about tourism, this is not just related to a World Cup game. This is promoting your trails, this is activities of 4th of July. What we don't want to do is strain the staff and/or chamber to put all this data in. You're going to want to highlight big, unique activities or big events. Santa Calagon Days might be one. But ultimately, we'll encourage you, after four or five items, is to link back to your local community calendar where everything resides, so then they can go further into what Independence offers. We don't want you to double and triple-enter anything.
Is there any information that we're able to extract from this?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's also brand-new. So the members will be getting your standard, well, I say it standard, but it's pretty robust analytics every month. And those task force members, once we go live, will be able to pull analytics, let's say, on a Monday afternoon before council meeting to report, yes.
Great, okay. Pretty intriguing. I was amazed, a couple of years ago, I was doing a bunch of work, will still do, in Inglewood, and they had a heart out there in front of Inglewood Theater, and the amount of people that would stop there and look at that in groups was amazing. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Councilwoman Wiley. Thank you for setting that up.
Thank you.
Ms. Short, thank you. Moving on to...
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilman.
If I could, real, just briefly, I want to introduce a troop 492.
Absolutely.
That just joined us. There's a troop, and it looks like packed, that joined us for our study session tonight. Just want to welcome them and thank them for coming, and be happy to visit with you afterwards if you like.
Great, welcome. Before, before we move on, is there any objections placing this, moving this item forward and putting it on the council agenda? No, I think that's a consensus. We'll move forward with that. Under Presentations, Criteria-Based Dispatch, Independence Fire Department, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm going to ask Chief Walker to come forward to give this presentation, but since being hired as our new fire chief, several important best practices that Chief Walker's been working to implement, and one of those are around how dispatching for fire calls and emergency medical service calls are done. So this is an important change for our organization and how we do business, and I wanted the council and the community to have awareness of that, so I will turn it over to the chief.
All right, thank you very much. Chief Walker's working the crowd.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We can have battle line chief talk, too, that's fine.
I was a voice scout. I was just asking where you guys at? Clairemont, okay. Hey, I was, I can't remember my troop number. So, good job, guys. Hey, Mayor Protem, Council, Jimmy Walker, Fire Chief, Independence Fire Department. Really thank you, Mr. Manager. Today, we're here to talk about criteria-based dispatching. One of the things that, after I had come here to Independence, I can't take the credit for this, I'm going to give all shout-outs and kudos to Assistant Chief Duplantis over there, Battalion Chief Burrell here. One of the things we identified as I got here was the call volume for the Independence Fire Department has dramatically increased over the last decade. And by dramatically increased, I would say in the neighborhood of going from about a decade ago to being, where were we at, 18,000 calls a year to about 29,000 calls a year? So we've seen exponential growth in our, in our call volume. With that, we see an increase in wear and tear on our apparatus. We also see wear and tear on the streets, expenditures that are cost from our personnel, a number of things. So one of the things that we identified was, while we were not able to go to EMD dispatching, which hopefully, in the future, we can do something along those lines, this criteria-based dispatching, or keyword dispatching, was a way for the fire department to try to responsibly reduce the call volume while still responding to important calls for service within the city. So I am going to let Chief Burrell give a quick synopsis of our program, and I'll be here to answer any questions that we don't have. And you all, I can trust that you guys all received the executive summary that we had before for you guys, right? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Administration. Chief Walker said it very well. We were looking at ways to increase our efficiency with dispatching, and that can be pretty darn difficult. You know, before the start of the year, the fire department responded on every single medical request, every single medical request, a fire truck would go, lights and sirens to assist. And that's crucially important on a medical emergency. Two people on an ambulance is not enough to handle critical medical calls, including things like... Okay, thank you. Including, is it in here? It's okay, I can wing it. Including things like, like a cardiac arrest, where you can, you can have needs of upwards of 10 people on those calls. So having firefighters as EMTs and paramedics can help in those critical events. However, with medical emergencies, we can also have the more low-acuity events. We have examples of people calling for things like, like rashes, back pain that's been going on for a couple of days. And although those are significant medical problems, sometimes they don't necessarily warrant an emergency response. So two years ago, in 2022, we did a study of how do fire departments handle this in the area? And as Chief Walker mentioned, emergency medical dispatch is the standard. So we took it, took a look at EMD, had them come out, they sat with us, they sat with representatives from IPD. It's a fantastic system, it's used across the nation. We were also looking at around a minimum of $4 million upfront implementation with additional costs after that. It wasn't very viable for what we were looking at at that point. So the study was kind of put on the table until, and I got to be very honest here, Councilwoman McCandless, we were having a discussion at a police PR event, it was right after we purchased Truck One, and you noted that it, that's a big investment for our community, that we need to look after stuff like that. And you're right. So we looked at that study again and said, well, can we bring criteria-based dispatch to the city? It is less cost, it can be implemented quicker, and although it's not as streamlined as EMD, is it, would it work for us? And so talking with, with the IPD dispatchers, we came up with a policy, did the training, and we instituted on January 1st. In your study, you can see that we've had pretty reasonable results. We expected, based off what other departments have done, to have around a 25% decrease in call volume. As of yesterday morning, we're sitting at 23%. So what that means, real world, is someone calls 911 for arm pain, that goes to our dispatch center. Our dispatch center, our dispatcher listens to that call and listens for a keyword. So if I say something like chest pain, chest pain is one of those keywords, that will trigger a fire department response, they'll send fire and they'll transfer that call to the ambulance. But in the case I just gave, it was arm pain. So if I say, if I call 911, I say I have arm pain, that call, instead of it being sent, or instead of dispatching out a fire truck, that will be sent to AMR, and AMR will send an ambulance. So since that started on January 1st, again, we've seen around a 23% reduction in sending fire trucks, lights and sirens. There's a lot of reasons we instituted, instituted this, because these, these are valuable tools, but also because of risk. The risk of sending a fire truck down the road, lights and sirens, on an unknown medical call or something like that, the risk from an accident, the risk of maintenance issues, I believe a quote was around $40,000 for a set of tires on one of those trucks. There's a lot of factors involved with these sort of decisions. So we've seen a 23% reduction over the past four months. One of the questions we have right off the bat is, are we doing this right? Is it, is it working? Because the last thing we want to do is not send a fire truck when it's needed. So we instituted a system to where when that call comes through, the police dispatcher assigns it to basically what's called a phantom fire unit. It doesn't exist, and that's just for tracking purposes. So we now know that every single, we now know the number of 911 calls that come through our system and go to AMR. Furthermore, when AMR realizes that they need, they need assistance, that something has changed, they call us back, and that call type actually changes to what's called an EMS assist. So we're creating these little pathways where we can track data and see how is this system working. For example, on January 1st, we set a bench, a benchmark of, we only want to see 15% of these calls coming back to us. Only 15% of the time, so out of 100 calls, 15 only come back to us. We've been under 15% every week since then, with the exception of one week, it was week two during the snowstorm. And a lot of things were, a lot of things were struggling that week. We are in weekly, monthly, if not weekly, discussions with AMR, listening to what their crew feedback is, listening to their perspective on it. We had discussions with, with legal departments on the feasibility of this, and what the, I would, I would defer to them on kind of the legal side of this, but the main concern with situations like this is, is that we don't send somebody. Somebody always has to go on a 911 response. It's called failure to send, looking at case law. The way this is set up, and because we have AMR as a partner, someone's already, always going on those calls, someone's always responding. On that arm pain call I just mentioned, an ambulance is going on that call. And furthermore, they use EMD. And so they have a list of priority responses that they go on, they divide it out, and on that arm pain call, it can be up to a half hour. So another benefit of criteria-based dispatch is us being able to say, we don't want to stick that ladder truck on that scene committed for over a half hour while an ambulance gets there because it was deemed to be a lower priority. This system is still being monitored. In fact, I would say, a system like this, you cannot walk away from, you have to keep a close eye on it, because there are ways for this system to fail, and we now always need to be updated on what's going on. We're on our third route of training with IPD's, IPD dispatchers, who have been, who have been great and have been very, very willing to work with us. And again, our rate is holding at around 23%. We look to keep that rate moving forward. And that's, that's my kind of overall briefing. Are there any particular questions?
Sure, thank you. Any other questions for the chief or battle line chief? Councilman Fears?
So you, you got me intrigued a little bit on this EMD, and you, so we couldn't go there, it's, that's, that's the, what I thought I heard you say was that that's the, kind of the top-of-the-line approach, but we couldn't accomplish that at this point, or?
Yeah, to put it as simply as possible, currently, under the way we operate now, is Independence Police Department is the primary access point for all 911 calls coming in, correct? So with the system that we have in place, AMR is always going to run EMD on a call, right? They're always going to go through these series of questions. Based on the acuity of the call, EMD processing can take anywhere from two to four minutes, right? So if we were to do EMD ourselves and not be dispatching in the ambulance, AMR is going to do the exact same thing over again. So there could be a lower acuity call that we could end up having an eight-minute process time for.
Right.
We, while we don't operate, if we were to ever take over an ambulance system, for whatever reason it may be, then we would do the EMD. But right now, there's no point to do EMD twice. So what we do is, I like to consider the criteria-based dispatching, think of it as a poor man's EMD. We are taking and looking for the key words that would indicate whether the acuity is severe enough for us to send a fire truck. If you're in EMD dispatching, there are different levels of calls between Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, and Omega, I believe. I'd have to go back, it's proprietary within the EMD system, but only a few of those criterias do you have a fire truck will respond on that call. Otherwise, it's an ambulance-only call. Well, the way that the Independence Fire Department has been acting in the last probably few decades is every 911 call that came in, a fire truck was going on. Well, when we're only running 14, 13,000 calls a year, it's more manageable. When you break 20,000, we started to see there's an issue. When we're pushing 30,000 calls, now you see we are putting undue wear and tear on these rigs. So what we've done is we've taken and we've created poor man's EMD to where we're evaluating these calls. Other departments in the metro area that don't have the high call volume, and call volume's rated by a number of things, we can look at the Alata Fire Department as a great case study when it comes to what's the difference between us. It's basically socioeconomic. Alata Fire Department runs the same number of fire stations, personnel, similar population, their call volume is sitting around 13,000 calls a year. They send a fire truck on every call. Well, when you're pushing 30, it's not really feasible, and we're seeing fire trucks run up and down the street and being canceled on a regular basis. What we've done here is try to find the most effective use of our resources and be able to not only reduce wear and tear on the equipment, on the firefighters, on the streets, because we did just look at the GeoBond and our wear and tear of streets, fire trucks have that wear and tear. But not only that, we're keeping fire trucks in service from the lower acuity calls for when someone really needs help. So that is why, that's the EMD versus criteria-based dispatching.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful, real helpful, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one, chief. So what is, what would you guess the total reduction? Because we have Arch program, which has helped us reduce calls or shift those calls to who is going to respond to those? What's, do you know what, a total number of calls that we don't have to send big apparatuses and stuff on to these scenes?
I could pull out my phone really quick. What's 23% of 29,000?
No, I mean between criteria-based dispatch and what we're doing with Arch, with the two combined, or is that all the same system?
Well, no, it's not the same system. So Arch is, sometimes Arch is stopping calls prior to us even receiving the call. So I'd have to look at John again to go where we're at. We had eight, 800 calls last- We had eight, 800 calls last year that were Arch calls. So we can only imagine that, that 800 calls reduced ours and PD's call volume by 800. I don't have that, those numbers in front of me to figure out where the breakdown lies in between where it was, I can say it was 600 fire, 200 police, but it's 800 calls that we reduced with Arch. Which, I'll go ahead and make the, the pitch now is, that's Arch 40 hours a week. If we could expand that program to where we were operating 24/7, I mean, if we're only operating 33% of the time and it was 800 calls, I think we can easily see that if we were operating that system 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we'd be pushing 2,500 calls that we'd take off the books, which is a huge reduction in our, I'm pointing back at Chief Desmond too, but our call volume. And it's the, it's those calls that we don't want within our system because they're not calls that PD would handle, because they're not necessarily somebody who is in, is committing a crime. They're also not someone who is needing a ride to the hospital, which is where we lay. So they're going to catch that, Arch's going to catch that, that in the middle ground, which is great. But what we see here in Independence is part of the issue is, as a community, a lot of communities will rely on the 911 system as their primary care physician. And we're seeing that here. We've seen it. That's what's happened in the last decade across the fire service in general, which is why departments all over the country have seen a rapid increase in call volume. And unless we do something drastic or something big, we're going to, we're just going to see this increased call volume without increasing our staffing and personnel, which, as a footnote, we haven't increased really, really truly increased our staffing to meet the call volume. So what do we have to do? We have to reduce those calls that are, that are on the lower acuity, non-necessary calls. But again, we do have that catch-all in place to where if AMR queues a call or if something changes as, as they're gathering more information, we can definitely get called back. So we feel as though it's still, we're doing the best we can, because that's our goal, is to do the best we can for the citizens of the city.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. So we have a unique relationship with AMR in that we don't own them, we don't contract with them. They are allowed to do business within the City of Independence. So a lot of your system depends on a great working relationship with AMR through, I guess, their commitment to independence. And how well are you working with them? Do you have mechanisms for them to give us feedback for how the system is doing?
I can look at John. We, we, we are in constant communication with AMR. Come on up. We speak with them multiple times a week, and their Paul Linger, who's in charge of AMR, is, works really well with us. John?
At minimum, we meet monthly, their leadership and ours, and we discuss specific incidents and specific calls. But as Chief said, it's typically, that's more of a weekly discussion between their leadership and ours when calls fall out of the system, or frankly, any sort of clinical issues. So I can only speak for the last two years, but I feel like our working relationship with them is solid.
And they have a new medical director. So we do know that some protocols will be changing, but we're used to that as far as, you know, evolving and trying to, we're, we are constantly working with AMR to improve our delivery model and our, our complete system delivery to where we have the best outcomes for the patients. So right now, I know AMR is doing a lot of research when it comes to how we handle medical calls and by medical versus trauma, and how long we're operating at the scene, and evaluating different protocols. So we're constantly, constantly working to get the best patient outcome we can for our citizens.
And AMR has the opportunity to kick it back to fire if they're like, look, we're at six different places and all of our teams are tied up?
Yes, ma'am. AMR actually has the ability with this system, and if John, you'd like to speak to this, which, by all means.
Absolutely. So first and foremost, they can kick it right back to us immediately. They don't have to wait. In addition to that, if they are overly committed, a lot of calls happening, it, it doesn't even get kicked to them. It stays with us. All their dispatcher has to say is, hey, we're blacked out. Hey, I don't have any units even nearby, and it comes with us. Because we recognize that even if it was sorted correctly, sometimes they just need help lifting somebody out. So there's a number of mechanisms where it comes right back to us. And not only that, but the crew, based off the call type, will know, hey, it's kicked back to us, it's something different. That clues them in to ask questions to see what AMR needs. So we said, we definitely wanted to make sure that they weren't high and dry, nor are community members high and dry, if circumstances weren't what they sounded like on the phone.
And we're keeping an eye on response time for the ambulance, because sometimes you guys are getting there first when we were dispatching everybody. So that's one of the questions that, of course, people are going to ask.
Well, as you know, as you said, we don't have much control over AMR and their response times. All I can control is our response times, which is why when we developed this, one of the main things we wanted to make sure that happened was that our citizens, no matter how low of acuity, and mind you, I keep saying acuity, right? Because it's, we like, we know that regardless of why you called 911, that it's a massive emergency to you. So we, knowing that it's a massive emergency to whoever has dialed 911, we also know that those calls in our world have an acuity level. So no matter how low of acuity call, we wanted to make sure that our citizens weren't sitting on their hands waiting for a response of some sort, which is why we put into place, if AMR's response was going to be delayed in any way, that we would go ahead and respond a fire truck. Now, like Chief Burrell said, that fire truck knows why we're going, they know why they're going. They know now, hey, this is because there is a delayed response time. And again, based on the acuity of that call, it may be a non-emergency response by that fire truck, which is exactly what we want, because we keep the citizens safe for an emergency response, because no matter how safe we are when we're responding emergency, there's always a danger involved with that. So knowing that that's a low acuity call, we can respond in a non-emergency fashion, still be on the scene within five minutes, and still give comfort to that citizen, no matter how low of acuity call it is, and comfort them during their time of need until they get AMR's resources on scene to transport them.
And my final question, we have just a richness of skill and talent in our dispatchers, and, you know, shout out to them because it's dispatcher week. But how do they get to be part of the decision-making tree or the feedback loop so that you're taking their information into account as you design systems?
So how we came about this, and I'll come on up, John, but part of how we designed this was when, when they came to me, we went to IPD and we also went to the dispatch, and we sought their feedback and input. But this model is based on numerous departments, but one in the region would be Springfield, Missouri, and during COVID, they wanted to reduce their call volume, so they saw this. We brought that to the dispatchers and we got their feedback, but I'd love, John, to say something more about that.
They've been a part of every step of this. The initial idea was in their inboxes first thing. And the, the training we've done is one-on-one for a lot of different reasons, but that's been nice because we can just sit down with each dispatcher and say, hey, does this pass the litmus test of what you do every day? Or, or does it not? And like I said, we're on the third round of it right now, so we've been doing our best to keep appraised, because this can get pretty, it can be pretty challenging to determine if someone slumped, or did they fall, or did they lean, especially on a 911 call. And they've been, they've been champs about it, and they're, the other reason this has been successful so far.
Hey, we got the PowerPoint, if you guys care, so I can zoom through it. You can see, you can see our call volume, how we've gone up. Total responses in 911 calls, you can see that 2025, we were projected to reach over 30,000 calls, and you can see from 2011 how, how much we've increased now that we got it working. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Chief, thank you so very much.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Under Presentations, number two, Emergency Preparedness. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just really wanted to give the council an update on all the things our Emergency Preparedness Division is working on, particularly as we head into severe weather season. So our Chief of Emergency Operations, Samantha Morris, is here tonight to update the council on their activities.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Samantha Morris, Chief of Emergency Operations. Wanted to give you guys an update. As City Manager Walker had mentioned, we are in storm season. It has already been a very active season for us. So just giving you guys a brief overview, we currently have two employees in Emergency Preparedness looking to go ahead and fill two additional positions. Within the last 14 months, we have a volunteer group that has completed over 3,000 hours of training. Our leadership team has completed about 900 hours, and we have donated 1,300 hours to exercises and events. That is both local, regional, state, and federal. You can see the numbers on the lower right-hand side there of the number of exercises, workshops, and presentations that we have been able to complete over the last 14 months. We have been awarded $250,000 in grants, and fingers crossed, we have just submitted our final report over to FEMA for a very large COVID reimbursement. So don't expect to hear anything for quite a few months, but the fact that that has been completed is a milestone, and a huge thanks to the Finance Department for working so closely with us to get that done. So what are some of the areas that we primarily focus on? So the type of emergencies, we've, again, in the middle of storm season here, we're going to be focusing on thunderstorms, tornadoes, wind, hail. We've got our winter and ice storms that we work closely with. Both of those entail a close relationship with our utility services for outages that individuals and citizens experience. Work closely with hazardous materials, whether that be spills. Work closely with railroads. Terrorism and a newer one that is on the horizon are these cybersecurity threats with tech services. So working closely with them to ensure that the City of Independence is safe. I apologize for this next slide because I am the last thing keeping you here from your dinner, but this is the best way to be able to explain it to you. So tonight, watch versus warning. It seems inevitable that every time we have any kind of storm, we always get the comment on social media, why didn't I hear the siren? Well, our first comment back is, remember sirens are not for you to hear inside, they are an outdoor tool for us to be able to alert individuals to seek shelter first and foremost. But a difference between a watch, which we do not have any sirens going off for, and the difference between a warning is that for a watch, we've got all the ingredients needed to make very dangerous potential weather. However, it's when those collide and they come together, do we actually get a warning? So just as a friendly reminder to citizens, this storm season has been unusual, to say the least. So right now, we are sitting at 55 confirmed Missouri tornadoes for 2025. We've got 3,200 damaging wind reports and over 1,000 hail reports that have happened. So to put that into perspective for you, our storm season will not end until the end of June. In the, in 2011, I believe it was, there were 75 total tornadoes confirmed for Missouri. So we are just starting storm season and already at 55. So they, the National Weather Service has already come out and said that we will probably be pretty close to 2006, which is our most active weather for Missouri, and that's only at 110 tornadoes. So we are, we are certainly creeping up there. So what do we do? Well, there's three easy steps that we need to have. We need to make a plan, we need to build a kit, and then we need to stay informed. And what that looks like for each of these is making a plan. What does that include? We're going to be talking to our family about where do we go during severe weather? Where do we go if we need to get out due to a fire? We're going to talk about a communications plan with our family. What happens if we're not together? This is a great opportunity for these kiddos behind me to understand that storm season does not care if you are in school or if you are home alone. You, there's a good possibility that a storm could hit and your parents are not home. So it's good for parents to have those conversations and evaluate, where do we go? What rooms do we use? What emergency contact numbers do you need to, to keep with you? And talk about this plan, make sure that you're updating it with your family. Second thing that we'd like for you to do is we want you guys to build a kit. So what does that include? Make sure you remember water. Make sure that you remember some food. Flashlights with batteries are necessary, a whistle, masks, important documents, making sure that you have a first aid kit. If you have prescription medication, make sure that you're rotating those in and out, keeping the expiration date in mind, but making sure that you've got something on hand inside that kit that you have, excuse me. And the last thing is stay informed and get involved. So ways to stay informed, they always say that you want to have about three different resources in order to receive messaging. So the first one is going to be that weather radio. Make sure that you've got one. The second option that you've got is a program that the city offers. It's called RAVE, and it is our emergency mass messaging system. You can find that by going to the City of Independence website, typing in emergency management. It is the second bullet. It's a quick, easy way for you to be able to sign up. You put in what you want to be notified for. If you only want to be notified for warnings, that's, that's fine. If you want everything, that's also fine. And if you need it in a different language, that's something else that is provided. So there are well over 100 different languages that the RAVE system will send messaging out. We were notified that just this week that the National Weather Service is no longer going to be distributing their messaging in a language, any other language besides English. So if you do need those type of messages in a language other than English, RAVE is going to be a great option for you. And another way to stay informed and get involved is our outdoor warning system. We do have an adopt a siren program. So the City of Independence has 35 sirens active, and we want to make sure that at the beginning of the month, when we are testing those, that you are hearing them. So we ask individuals to adopt a siren, walk outside. Most of the time, you can probably hear it inside of your home, but just message us and let us know that it's going off so that we can confirm that it's properly functioning. Another option for you about getting involved is becoming a volunteer in emergency preparedness. So we have several different ways to do that. Medical Reserve Corps, if you have a medical background, is one way that we are able to get individuals involved. And the second way is by a program we offer called CERT, which is Your Community Emergency Response Team. There are 36 different programs and areas of interest that individuals are allowed to sign up for, to be able to receive specialized training in those areas, whether that be a search and rescue, communications, logistics, planning, exercising, tabletop, those type of things. So when we're, we're planning for an attack of some kind, or we're planning for a tornado, what does it look like? Those type of exercises, those type of events, things like that. Okay? So with that, we want to ensure that you guys are prepared for emergencies, that you guys are ready. And if you guys have any questions, I am happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you. I was lucky to be part of some of the training for city officials for what happens in an emergency. Most of the training was, don't get in the way of the people who need to do their job, don't go take photos, don't show up for a press conference while the fire department's trying to keep people safe, or the electrician team is trying to keep cords out of the way. But I appreciate that you made those things available for us in parts where we understand the complexity of the regional planning that goes into effect. So I appreciate that Independence commits the time and resources and staffing to be part of those regional communications, because, you know, it's not going to respect the boundary of one town. It's very likely we're going to need resources from each other and for each other. So thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, Ms. Morris. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, we'll move on to boards and commissions.
A recommendation has been made to appoint Linda Pringle, Linda Humphrey, Tammy Huff, and Rachel Eyes to the Animal Welfare Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Amanda McIntyre and Grant Watkins-Davis to the Tax Increment Financing Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint Haven Herndon and reappoint Lee Argo to the Heritage Commission. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Katie Gall to the Japanese Sister City Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Catherine Leicher to the City Parks Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint Jim Hannah to the Tree Commission. And a recommendation has been made to appoint Nancy Eper to the Independence Arts Council. Staff request direction to add resolution to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to those boards.
Is there any discussion or conversation with the names put forward? Hearing none. Please put those names forward at the next council meeting. With that, I would like to take a few moments to conversate a little bit about the election that we had, take a moment of personal privilege, and definitely open that up to my colleagues here to do so as well. But as you know, we had a very important vote last Tuesday, and I would like to take a moment to talk about that very important vote last Tuesday. Our citizens were asked to consider one of the largest proposals and questions in citizens were asked to consider one of the largest proposals and questions and asks in our city history. So first of all, thank you for getting out and vote. Doesn't make any difference how you fell on that line. Thank you for getting out there and exercising your right to vote. You were asked to consider three questions. Question one was public safety. Question two was roads, bridges, and sidewalks. Question three, historic sites and parks. As a reminder, this was not a simple majority vote. This was a 57% threshold by state statute. So it could not be 50 plus one more to get us over the line. It was a 57% threshold. Out of the three questions, question two passed by 60.6%. Question three failed with only 54.4% saying yes. Question one failed with 47.2% saying yes. Although I was rooting for all three to pass, I am very grateful and humble for the trust that you have placed in me and my colleagues and the city administration to do the work that you suggest to. This is a historic vote with historic responsibilities. The community engagement and conversation that we have had over the last year must keep going. It has been a pleasure meeting a lot of folks as we conversated over the last year. I know the City Manager, many of us came to community engagements over 35 over the past months to discuss and communicate and to hear and listen. The challenges that question one and question two would have addressed are not going away. This is the opportunity to keep listening, building trust, and accomplishing the work that needs to be done with the passage of question two. I'm excited about the future. I think this is one of the most important historic times that I've been a part of. And I'm excited about the next season that we are going to go into. I do would like to, I would like to have the City Manager speak to a couple of our next steps, but beforehand, if anyone would like to have a few words, you're more than welcome to. Or we'll just kick it off to the City Manager. Councilman Fears?
I'll, I'll just add my thanks to our voters for approving item two. I'm excited to see what that difference that makes in our community. I think it'll be noticeable. It'll be, you know, it'll be specific. You'll be able to follow through and see what, what we said we were going to do that we actually did. You'll see signs that say, you know, paid for by Independence GO bond or something to that effect. That's not exactly right, but I'm not sure what language they'll use. But all that is really important, I think. And it, you know, it builds on the trust that citizens have in the community. The, the questions one and three aren't going away. We'll have to figure out how we deal with those and trying to provide for our city. But I'm really appreciative of, of question two passing and look forward to the opportunity that comes from that.
Councilwoman McCandless?
I second my colleagues, but the one thing I'd just like to stress is that we have committed to be sure that you can see when the dollars are borrowed, how they are expended, what we bought with that money, and then how that payback occurs. So I see our Communications Department very happy with how they've done with talking about these issues. And we have committed those resources to be sure that people get to see how those dollars are spent. Also in conjunction and partnership with our sales tax funds because those two things will be complementary to each other as we move forward on road sidewalks and bridges. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Vai?
I just want to say that the voter's approval, approval of question two reflects a shared vision for a more vibrant independence. And this represents our commitment to building a safer, more accessible community for everyone. I am genuinely excited to see the positive changes that will come from your support. And thank you for believing in our community.
Great. Well, Mr. City Manager, what are the next steps that we can look forward to?
Well, again, thank you, council, for your, your comments and your leadership on this issue. There are several next steps that this council and this community can look forward to. Regarding question number two, it is not just as simple as now we get to go by the bank and pick up our, our funds. There is a process towards issuing debt. The council remembers this past Monday night, you gave approval to $50 million in bonds for public safety purposes. We need to go through that same process now. So the city will have to pull together all of the required bonding documents, work with our financial advisors, our underwriters, our bond counsel to get all of those documents prepared. Our current target right now is to issue our first tranche of funds no later than this fall. So I have given direction to all those aforementioned parties that I just mentioned to begin working on putting together the necessary documents for city council consideration so that we can have our first tranche of funds issued to us this fall. That will allow us as a city to begin designing and putting together our very first projects so that we can bid those this winter when all of the other municipalities will be bidding their construction projects for 2026. So a lot of those vendors bid almost as far out as a year in advance on those projects. We are maybe cautiously optimistic that perhaps we could catch a vendor before the end of this year who finished their projects in a different city early and are looking for some work to put a bow on their, their work for 2025. And so maybe that would allow us to get to a few of our projects early on. But more than likely, we'll bid all of those this winter and then be able to see construction work on those beginning in the spring. The, the tax code is the term I'm looking for, has a requirement that you have to have a reasonable purpose for your funds within the next two to three years. So we can't go borrow, as we said when we were out visiting with the community, borrow all of these monies at once. So we will issue these in a series of tranches so that we'll be able to spend those funds within the window of what our schedule allows. Our municipal services staff has already started working together to try to assign some order to when these projects would be issued. And as Councilmember McCandless stated, we plan then to make sure all of that information is available on the website so that the community can see at what time these projects are intended to be delivered. Of course, that's subject to, you know, availability of contractors and weather and all of that. But, you know, begin to see the schedule of delivery for each of those projects. And then, of course, we'll be meeting with the council's Audit and Finance Committee at your quarterly meetings, our annual presentations to this group, and the Sales Tax Street Oversight Committee to talk about how those funds are being allocated as well. So a lot of work that is starting to come together behind the scenes to effectuate the will of the voters that was given last Tuesday night.
Just to piggyback on that, I would say with the consideration that we have done, not only with greenfield development, with the master developer conversation and execution of that, well, on top of our GEO bond conversation and the passage of number two, even before the vote, there was a strong conversation within the metro that Independence was beginning to turn a corner with its development and capital investment. So thank you to everybody for that.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, I may add, since I did reference the Sales Tax Oversight Committee for, for streets, at your study session in two weeks, the city staff has worked with the, each of the Sales Tax Committees to resume the in-person presentations from those Sales Tax Committees. So you will hear from those five groups next, or in two weeks on the 28th, as well as I know the council has already heard the annual comprehensive financial audit from Ruben Brown. But I think we all want to take an opportunity to make sure that that information is shared as broadly as possible. So Councilmember Fears, I'm sorry, but it doesn't look like viewership's as strong for Audit and Finance Committee meetings as it is for study sessions.
We're trying.
We'll, we'll work on that. But we will utilize that study session as well to hopefully give a broader audience a, a update on what our annual audit looked like as well.
Sure. Yeah, Councilman Fears?
Follow-up question on the GEO bond.
Yes, sir.
Part. So I'm recalling that you thought that maybe we might be able to move forward quicker on some of the bridges because those were already designed and set up. Is that, are we saying that's probably we're too late for that this year?
When I talked about, so we hope we could catch some of these contractors. So let me just give a kind of a, you know, hypothetical example. If a, if a contractor had been awarded bridge projects or in citywide overlay in a surrounding city and they were able to finish that up by, you know, August, there's still several months before the plants shut down for the season due to the temperature. And our hope is to work with our partners in the construction industry to advertise that the city is interested in trying to deliver some of these projects this year, particularly some of those bridges that are in need of resurfacing, you know, wouldn't be as complex as a total rebuild or redesign, and hopefully catch some of those at the backend cycle where maybe they just want to add some extra work to the end of their business plan for the year before the plant shut down for the season. So that is what we are trying to capture by getting aggressive with issuing that first tranche of funds so that we can then simultaneously advertise the city's desire and get competitive bids for those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing else, we will conclude the tonight's meeting. Thank you everybody for coming.